Manufacturing Facility at that at forty-six sixty River Road. Approximately twelve point five acres in the zone HI heavy to Ostrail. So Roseanne, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you to talk and I will show um the site plan drawing bits uh we have into all of the board members happy as well. So if anyone... Yeah, if you would increase your volume a little, that would be great, but you know we can't hear.
Yeah, you can't do much improvement by turning one off.
Can you people hear it yet?
I can't.
I'm on the next one, I can't hear it. I'm gonna urinate then.
I don't mean I...
Okay, Roseanne, try again.
Yeah.
It's ringing near us, but I...
I can really only hear you.
Amy?
Okay.
Amy, one other suggestion.
Yeah.
Is we're listening to the computer. Can you put that microphone down to the computer and use your speakers?
I guess my first question is, did everyone receive what was sent to them by the town and Niagara?
Yes, every board member received a complete application of all the documentation of the town and Niagara's.
Okay, but I guess would everybody like... Is there any questions I got instead of trying to um explain what's been submitted, I'm not trying to prove mandatory or better to take questions at this time to do the difficulty in trying to end this meeting?
Well, first of all, what are you going to manufacture?
Asphalt, hot mix asphalt.
Just asphalt?
Same, same thing as the riparts.
Thank you.
So Walt, go ahead.
Okay Walt, go ahead.
Roseanne, can you hear me from over there?
Very, very faint.
Why don't you come over here?
Come over here.
I'll switch, I'll switch seats.
Okay.
That's good, um, and facility at that at forty-six sixty River Road. Approximately twelve point five acres in the zone HI heavy to Ostrail. So Roseanne, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you to talk and I will show um the site plan drawing bits uh we have into all of the board members happy as well. So if anyone... Yeah, if you would increase your volume a little, that would be great, but you know we can't hear.
I'm sorry, there's a terrible lag and hack on.
It's because I'm on the phone in there.
You can't do much improvement by turning one off.
Can you people hear it yet?
I can't.
I'm on the next one, I can't hear it. I'm gonna urinate then.
I don't mean I...
Okay, Roseanne, try again.
Yeah.
It's ringing near us, but I...
Amy?
Okay.
Amy, one other suggestion.
Yeah.
Is we're listening to the computer. Can you put that microphone down to the computer and use your speakers?
I guess my first question is, did everyone receive what was sent to them by the town and Niagara?
Yes, every board member received a complete application of all the documentation of the town and Niagara's.
Okay, but I guess would everybody like... Is there any questions I got instead of trying to um explain what's been submitted, I'm not trying to prove mandatory or better to take questions at this time to do the difficulty in trying to end this meeting?
Well, first of all, what are you going to manufacture?
Asphalt, hot mix asphalt.
Just asphalt?
Same, same thing as the riparts.
Thank you.
So Walt, go ahead.
Okay Walt, go ahead.
Roseanne, can you hear me from over there?
Very, very faint.
Why don't you come over here? I'll switch, I'll switch seats.
Okay.
That's good, um, and then it's...
I, I guess like...
Okay, I have a, a series of questions for you. Uh fir- first of all, um, and I'm gonna try to make it a logical route going from the beginning towards the end of your process. So right at the very beginning is, why do you need an easement to get onto the property?
That is because the land over...
She's still there, she should've been there. We, we'd lost, we'd lost you after you just started. Can you repeat?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Now let's show that we can subdivide the property to be easy to leave on twelve and a half acreage. And we're actually gonna subdivide it and the plant is closer to the front of the acreage, which is quicker away from the, at the university. Um, when we first were talking with the landlord and making a deal, we just decided to get off all the whole camping, at this point. However, leaving us the ability to subdivide if necessary, so that's why we put this place back.
Okay, so bottom line is, the entrance way is owned by the other property and you need the easement to be allowed through?
Right.
Okay, and at the entrance you have a twenty-five foot ra- uh wide road.
Right.
With two directions. Okay, on the process, I'll, I'll ask this question. Asphalt is usually made by mixing stones with tar, is that correct?
If you guys were in that bit, inside that, maybe you're mixing wood, so you're gathering a asphalt slant, which is a side by side of the property.
Right, the aggregate is crushed stone of various sizes.
A stone is a aggregate of crushed stone, gravel, sorry, but yes, a very size.
Uh, will you be crushing stone either now or in the future?
No, all the stone will be processed. The most we would do there is we go to become a more green facility, would be to screen existing buildings that we would take in, which is asphalt that's been milled up from the roadways and set up ways to get like they used to do here to go, to bring in the property. The most we would do is screen it, but no, not with performing any crushing operations.
Does that screening require a shaker?
Most likely.
Okay, um, now going back a, a little bit even farther in the process, uh you'll be doing some ground movement to be able to put some of the more stationary items on the property, like your chimney, so you'll have ground movement?
I'm sorry, could you please, just that one more time, I was kinda losing it.
Okay, will you be, in producing the locations, the items that you're putting on the property, like the chimney, will you be moving soil?
No, no, the, the existence of t- topography of that, of that land is fine.
Uh, don't you need to put footers, don't you need to put footers in for your chimney?
Oh, I'm just, I shouldn't say that. We'd have to put footers in, but I won't be changing the grade per se. It'll be going back, this is the top of the footers, just sort of basically the silos. Um, those would be the biggest footers and the scale, which is not very deep, but those would have to be excavated in place to do with the same grade. I mean, the grade elevation is at the elevation, this grade that I'll be putting, you can slide that.
Right, and um you're also putting in roads. So are you doing anything special with the soils that are moved?
No, we're not, we don't plan to, we don't anticipate having to do anything special with the soil. I mean, most of it would go back, which really not a lot that would be excavated out. Um, any excess soil, I would probably filter along the perimeter, uh if acceptable, and it's a more freezing.
You, you might, you might, hopefully I can keep talking loud enough so you can hear me. You, you might need to check with the DEC. You're only two hundred feet away from the High Park Bloody Run landfill and downwind from it. So you might have to check any soils moved for chlorbenzines, chlorotylenes, dioxin, and puren because of that neighborhood. Just to let you know ahead of time.
Yes, the DEC is aware of the foundations, because they have the whole set of plans and they had already issued a draft for it. I realize that they have put back a minute of debt just until this process is complete. Um, at the time that we submitted to the DEC, it was our understanding that the process was complete. Um, so here we are with that, just due to the circumstances that arose. However, um, the DEC is fully aware of the foundation that would be necessary and any foundation work would be with their approval and their inspections. And again, if, you know, checking was required, we would do testing, there's not gonna be a lot of access to get any. Um, usually if there is any, any testing is clean, we can dispose of it if necessary, let them know the final resting place. If it is questionable, they usually allow it to stay on site and use it for backup for other purposes as long as it stays on the business property. Um, the DEC has not brought up any concerns whatsoever, people are putting in the foundations or any potential excess soils at this point.
Okay.
And I don't anticipate a huge problem from it, I anticipate there'll be some logistics that we have to handle, um, but nothing major. Uh, I think it required a medical consulting owner, uh before we then even approached to report this site and then he had given his approval to go ahead and get the approvals, um, and it did appear that that was gonna be a problem.
Okay, I'm gonna move down the line of your production. You'll be moving uh stone, you'll be possibly shaking for sizes. What is your technology for dust control?
Well, dust control is really just, usually dust control off of piles of material and that would be simply any spraying of water, that would be, if, if necessary. Um, there is a dust control that's been included in the whole package that was given to the DEC, but that's one of their questions. This mostly, usually off of the, off of the raw materials necessary. There, any emissions coming out of the drying and mixing component goes through the baghouse and they're, it's all collected. Everything is collected into the baghouse and then you have to clean out the baghouse, uh as necessary depending on your production levels.
Well, uh...
The fine can actually get, the fine gets ducted back into, I mean, fine is dust, whatever you like to call it, gets ducted back into the drum and gets remixed into, it gets circulated through and seen to the asphalt.
You, your, your bag, um, dust collection is gonna be over which unit?
The dust collecting unit, the emissions collecting unit, which is called the baghouse, that's the end of the drum. So you've got the cold feed bin, you've got your, your main conveyor. Everything that's dumped into the drum, so you've got the hot mix asphalt behind it, it's all self-contained. That is loaded into the drum. The drum mixes everything, the asphalt goes to the left to, if you're looking at it, I guess, heading north, if you're facing north. The asphalt would go to the left onto what's called the drag slot, and off of the drum is ductwork that goes into what's called the baghouse. That's where your thirty-one foot stack is that allows for the emissions to be emitted from the combustion.
So your, your stack is your major air emissions control technology?
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna move on a little bit. Uh, as your stone goes down the conveyor belts and you start mixing it with the tar, the petroleum tars, uh what is your uh process for heating the tars, pouring it, and mixing the tars?
That gets fed by a piping system, a hot oil system, that takes the AC, the AC comes in warm, it comes in liquid form and it comes in warm, and that gets connected to the, the uh AC tank, which would be, you know, really used to take on the production uh water plant there. The AC tank remains warm and there's a hot oil system that, there's a piping system that's directly, a closed system, that's piped directly into the drum.
Okay, the um...
It's a closed, that's a closed, that's a closed system. Once all the materials hit the drum, the whole process is a closed system. And the only point that it, it comes out is of the baghouse, which is the thirty-one foot stack that allows for the emissions of the combustion.
So you have emission, emissions of, of volatiles. Uh, when you're mixing uh the tar, uh you have a heating unit that shows on the, on the map and a mixer. Uh, there's a point source there, there's point sources of evaporation as it goes up the conveyor belt. And uh there's also an emission point source associated with the tower of, for loading trucks.
And let me clarify that. There are minor emission points, they're called fugitive emission points. Everything pretty much is contained into the baghouse and that's the stack. The DEC and all the modeling that we have done and the emissions, because of the drag slot, which is taking the actual, the completed asphalt product up to the silo and, and stores it into the silo, then it gets, the bottom of the silos open up and that's how you load the truck. There are small emission points, called fugitive emission points, that we have done all the modeling for the DEC has, it's why they took eight months to approve us. The DEC has gone through several questions, all of the institute questions of our equipment and has calculated all of those emissions point and determined that any of those will be within or below any standards necessary for the DEC, so what they could have issued, the draft permit. We have also offered to them that it is part of the, of the permitting process within, and I don't, don't hold it to the exact day, but once you start producing the asphalt, you've got so many days and then you have to do what's called stack testing and other, and any other testing, which is this permit, they require other testing. So we would have to perform all that testing to prove that they modeled it, which proved that any emissions that we were going to have to admit pursuant to this collection was gonna be below any threshold that the DEC deemed to be approved, approvable. That being said, if in fact the emissions were above, because the modeling may have been erroneous, which we don't expect, however, we had already told them, we would then continue to duct in where the drum dumps into the drag slot, the drag slot is covered, there's only a small point where it dumps onto that conveyor, it's called the drag slot, carries it up to this top of the silos. At the top of the silo, if we are emitting at that point, we were gonna contain the whole thing with another ducted system, a complete cover if you will. That cover was gonna be piped, ducted back into the drum, so the emissions goes back into the combustion chamber of the drum, and you're collecting it all there. From there, it gets ducted to a truck. Once the plant shield closes again at the bottom of the silo, there's nothing else being admitted. Now, the truck, as they drive down the road, just like they do with riparts or any other asphalt plant, in fact, just like they do when they hook up to any paving machine, will admit the same emissions at that point. Once the material is produced and together, you have a lot less emissions than, actually you emit more from the back of a paving, as your paving does, which are being done right in front of houses.
What, uh based on your models, how many tons of VOC emissions do you anticipate?
I don't have, um, I, I do apologize to the mills at the airport, I don't have those specific numbers. I do know that it's less than one hundred tons per year, which is the amount over by the mayor's state DEC.
A hundred tons per year of VOCs?
A, a, a hundred tons total, from what I recall off the top of my head. I would imagine that the draft permit was submitted as part, or I believe you have a copy of the draft permit. Do you know, I'm sorry, I'm on the phone?
Yes.
My computer's not working in the mills there.
I've, I've seen...
I'm a little lost, but I would imagine that you had received the entire draft permit from the DEC?
Yes, and I do know based on, um, some of my questions related to their feedback is that you didn't cover all of the various potential fug- fugitive emission sources. So I'm just gonna mention, the VOCs will include, well hydrogen sulfide's not a VOC, but there's hydrogen sulfide, but there's, in the volatile organic compounds, you're gonna have sulfur, um, or captains. And they're the smelly things. They're the things that people smell down to the parfum billion level. However, the um more notorious and common vapors are gonna include benzene, toluene, ethyl benzene, and xylene, uh betex. Uh, so putting up a hundred tons per year of things that, based on past analysis that I've seen, maybe thirty to forty percent of the VOCs could be benzene. Benzene is a known human carcinogen and you're, you're mentioning that it will be part of your planned hundred tons per year. That sounds serious.
Well, again, I'm, I'm sure everybody's aware of the Rippers' operation, and they actually produce more than what we would be permitted to produce. I think their permit allows up to maybe two or fifty thousand ton, or more.
Um, I'm...
And I certainly can foil that, you get a copy for you.
I'm only allowed to ask about this site plan, so I really don't...
Well, I'm just...
Yeah. Uh, how tall, how tall is the stack?
Can I finish or just, I don't mean interrupt, that's hard to speak and you can't see who's talking.
Oh, I, I, I moved on to another question. How tall is your stack?
Thirty-one feet. That should be also in the DEC format.
Yeah, I, I think I read that and, and just as a reference, I was driving by the other day, the uh old stone chimney by the Moses Parkway, um, that's around the same height. So that gives a little visual comparison. That's not too tall. Uh, I'm gonna move on to one more additional item. What do you have for fire safety on the site?
There really had, maybe, the only thing that can catch fire is if, if there's a fire in the drum, you simply shut off, obviously everybody knows that fire needs some type of a catalyst, but then it heats oxygen and sends the blow system, I know, like, you shut the fuel source off, which here would be propane, and we could also do natural gas. And it's, it, there's, I mean, there's no potential for fireworks right now, if, if there's any planes inside the drum.
You mean, all, all of the tar that you're adding to ma- uh make asphalt is coming from drums?
It comes from a, it comes from a, a tank of truck that is pumped into the drums, but tramped to the AC tank, which is a completely closed system, double insulated walls, um, can't, it has no catalyst to it to, I mean, the, the emission point is so high and there's nothing that you can start it on until you're into the drum. And again, that is only fueled by either propane or natural gas, whichever company chooses. Here we are choosing propane. And again, if there's ever a turn, you shut the source off and it, it burns out, there's nothing where it can continue.
So you, you have, you have no storage of um petroleum tars larger than the tanker truck and drums?
It's, it's a thirty thousand gallon AC tank.
Okay.
Approximately one tank of truck.
And how do you keep that tank uh molten?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. How do I keep this...
How, how do you, how do you keep, how do you keep that tank elevated in temperature enough to be portable?
It's a heated tank, there's a hot oil system piped that run in, that run around it, so that it keeps it warm.
Okay, can I...
And that's just pumped, and that's a closed system as well, that system also goes over to the uh, to the uh silos, to keep the material warm in the silos.
How do, how do you keep the temperature from going too high?
There's gauging on all the systems, there is a total, uh, there's, a whole program that gets tidied, everything, everything's electronic, it comes into the master, uh motor control center, which is inside the mixing uh station, where that is completely manned, and then if they have high alarms on, they have alarms on all of the different components for that, it gets brought back into anything that's a concern or anything that's alarmed, everything that was above any levels that are set, they're set on those reasons, but also there are parameters into the system and it's all completely automated.
Okay, so you have automatic shut offs?
Yes.
Okay.
On different points, yes, different points within the, within the process, basically, yes.
I'm, I'm almost done, uh, is there any fire hydrants on the property?
I don't know that off the top of my head, I apologize. First person that asked me that.
Do you stage any firefighting foam on the property?
Again, you cut out, I'm sorry, did I stage any what?
Firefighting foam.
No, I don't believe any asphalt pit in all of New York State requires any firefighting foam. And there are many that are much closer to anything that we are in contact with in, in all of New York State. It's not according to the DEC, so I think I'm not an expert across the state.
Okay, um, ba- based on what I said guys, things that I'm a little bit concerned about, that I don't see a lot of detail other than some verbal comments?
I'm sorry, I can't hear, I just heard things that you're a little concerned about, but I didn't hear anything after that.
Okay, I'm, I'm repeating them. I'm concerned about proper handling of, of soils that may be contaminated in process. Um, engineering controls, um, noise, because the shaker and the belts can make noise. By the way, you're only about six hundred feet away from Niagara University, um, dormitories. So they're, they're not that far away, so attenuation by distance really doesn't do a whole lot. Uh, I'm concerned about uh, uh, stone, crystalline silica?
I believe, I, I guess my question is six hundred feet from the rear property line to their property line? Six hundred feet from the actual manufacturing equipment component to their closest building? I guess I would like to clarify...
Six hundred feet from your property line to the beginning of the Niagara University dormitory campus and, um...
The property line or the building itself?
Uh, 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 bottom line is, you're close. I won't argue you.
I'm sorry, say that again?
You're close. Uh, there's other properties uh to the south as well. So I'm also concerned about crystalline silica dust, VOCs, benzene, fire safety, and, and I sense information because that type of a storage tank, the tars themselves are only categorized as combustible. However, the VOCs are highly flammable. And most of the literature that shows explosions of tar has come from initiation of the uh VOCs. And by the way, the stack being thirty feet high, the hot stuff will be down below, it gets colder as it goes up. The VOCs may also, in addition to what's emitted, will condense and you'll have a concentration of flammable vapors in the stack. So I'm worried about firefighter safety. Oh, and I don't know, and, and I'm addressing this to you too as well, you might wanna check with the local fire departments to see if the twenty-five foot entrance is adequate for firefighting emergency response.
It's always ten, twenty-five foot's always meant for any emergency vehicle.
Because that's, you have it listed as two ways, that's only twelve feet each way.
You don't know what kind of equipment you...
It's one continuous...
Huh?
How big the equipment is?
Um, if there's ever an issue, we get dropped off the road and they can get out of twenty-five feet.
Oh, so you're...
No difference that any other asphalt, again, operated in New York City, then you're gonna have nothing...
No foam, no water?
Twenty-five foot access.
No bathroom?
A normal road that any, the fire truck, if it needs to get to our facility, it's gonna go down the road, whose lane is no bigger than fourteen feet. If they have to get there, so...
I'm leaving it with you.
And I talked to color department, I mean, when we were putting the plant up here...
Technology and what leaves the site.
And they looked at everything and there's no concern, and again, check with every, everybody else and what everybody else is doing in New York State to make asphalt, so you perhaps can stay pro. And I'm doing it no differently than any other companies from New York. And it's associated with every New York State DEC rule and regulation. And the DEC has led us extensively for all of the volunteers, the emissions, uh, I had to do some noise... Noise, uh, studies, and there's the, uh, any studies, I had to do a traffic study, I did an appraisal study to make sure that we didn't develop any other neighborhoods. Like, we went through everything that any other asphalt manufacturer would have to go through. And it was not taken lightly. I asked about the distance because I wasn't sure if you meant property, property line or from actual manufacturing. One of the reasons why we're asking the approval, we are looking at splitting that property. If we split the property, if we would've done it before, then we wouldn't even, I guess, be here, because the manufacturing facility would be well towards the front, further away than the five hundred feet, um...
Okay, thank you Roseanne, do we have any other public comment?
Accepting, accepting existing, very particular, should have been, you know, I am.
I have a question.
A lot of people, we're not buying more aggregate, we're not using more aggregate, we're not taking more aggregate out of the earth, which is a non-renewable resource. We screened it there, we have a small screener on it, everything else would be coming in, none of it, means none of it. Out of the hundred and fifty thousand tons of material produced, you're talking about roughly a hundred and thirty thousand ton of, like, middle over a hundred thousand tons, I should say, of aggregate. For ton, A C tons, the rest of it is stone. So all the hundred and fifty thousand, less than that, which is for raw material for aggregate. Out of that number, we might be using thirty thousand ton of million materials that we would have to screen before putting that up there to the material, so that we can make it into a green, which is all trying to get to a greener environment. Taking that into account, everything else that would be drawn in is pre-screened, doesn't have to be touched, gets high on, and just simply gets loaded. Again, we are not doing anything different here than La Farja Street, than, than not in West Hanukkah, than anywhere else. We picked a site that did not need appearance, we picked a site that was, did not make presuming, that is only property. I just wanna make sure everybody understands and can appreciate that when making their decision as to what we're doing. Turn that we would be producing this hot metal asphalt, she would be the first woman-owned business in all of New York State producing this material, which the New York State D E, D O T is looking for every day. Women and minority businesses should be able to help. The world contractors, rebuild our roads. She'd be the only one, she would be the first and the only one in New York State producing asphalt. And she would not be producing it in any different manner than allowing about New York State to, easy for any of our competitors. And there is one right in the town of Niagara, and there has not been one in plenty. They emit same emissions or more because they're committed to it. I believe at least a hundred thousand ton more than we have. They actually do blasting and the segregated ball material in there. And the amount of A C that they stored, it's gotta be a huge three to four times what we would be sold. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that and can appreciate that when making their decision. These concerns, it's not a new process. I, I appreciate your concerns, however, it's been vetted out in many, many other asphalt manufacturing facilities, but they ended up not being a concern that needs to be where you mean foam on the site, where there has been fires, where there has been an issue where a fire truck couldn't get to the site, where dust has been absorbing it. I mean, that's what the studies score, that's what the modeling score, that's what the New York State D E C questioned us for seven or eight months. And our expert, and I'm not the expert on it, but our expert was there and available and answered every question until they got to the point of the draft permit. I don't know if anybody on this group has any studies that have been produced by anybody else to dispute our order study, to dispute our emission study, to dispute our traffic study, to dispute our, uh, noise study. If they do, I would appreciate copies of them. But everything produced to this point and verified by the New York State D E C just some day has, has been asked, answered, and have been answered to, you know, to satisfactory, to satisfaction of the D E C to allow us for a permit, a draft permit for a hundred and fifty thousand tons. For you.
Excuse me, can you, real quick in layman's terms, can you tell me what this company does so that I can understand it? Because, so, I'm hearing asphalt. I don't know, are we taking old asphalt from a road and taking apart? I don't know, can you please, I'm really ignorant on this.
Well, you, you can use some old. Typically, from what the literature shows-
Yeah.
Typical asphalt is a mixture of petroleum tar. So when you get crude and you distill off gasoline and you get this thick, tarry material, they mix that with stones of various sizes to make the patch and use for road construction. So it's a, it's a mix of stone and tars.
And that's what they're gonna be making there.
Is the resulting mix.
Um, are they using old millings, did I hear that?
This is the first time I heard of that, she said that there were, in addition to stone, some of the aggregate, aggregate of stone of various sizes-
Right.
Is, is going to be possibly for millings. And this is the first time I heard that.
I have a question, flash karma. So what has, I understand that Niagara University had some concerns over this project, have those been alleviated?
Well, I think there's a lot of people on the phone.
Yeah.
Because, and I-
Well, can you give us an update on the D E C report?
I mean, most people don't, really.
Well, I think that, you know, we probably should give an opportunity to some of the people that are on the phone, if, if there's anybody, I should have told as many people as I can, it looks, it looks like a lot more, I don't know, first.
Um, so what, we have a public board?
She's still on the phone.
Well, yeah. Um, so I, I think that, you know, based upon past practice and as such, if you wanna do this, you know, there's, in the past, we've given people on the phone an opportunity, this is not a public hearing, I think that that's important to understand. It's simply a, an open meeting and a public meeting. And, and I also think it's important for everybody on the, the phone and on WebEx to understand that this board is an advisory board only, and is not the decision-making board. So any recommendations of this board issues will go back to the town of Niagara. And then the town of Niagara, they'll be responsible for making the final determination on the project. But in the past, we've let people speak, you know, quickly, um, just to voice any questions or comments or-
How many speakers do they have?
I don't think there's that many. Cause there's quite a few projects left, and I see a lot of the names that are recognized for next, or subsequent projects. So I, I think there's probably only a few.
Okay.
So, okay, I, I don't know how fast to- Oh, um, if you would like to speak, uh, have questions or, you know, comments, I guess, uh, on, just comments mostly, on this project, um, you can unmute yourself and, um, go ahead and speak. Hopefully, not everyone does it all at once, uh, so we'll kind of see how it goes. And at least state, yeah, state your name too first. Yes. Yeah, go ahead, just state your name first.
I just wanna say, I appreciate the planning board doing this project, I really appreciate. Um, and, um, previous speaker made a valiant, um, pitch project, and I appreciate her, uh, pressure. But there's one thing that I wanna say, I'm just kinda like the council, my personal G O I, I advise myself. There's a point in getting different rates at this location, when there's some of the other asphalt locations maybe. That is, it is adjacent to the city of Niagara Falls, which has been a dumping ground, really bad stuff for, I don't know, decades, but a century. And if you take the city of Niagara Falls on a project, there's a good chance you're gonna discover stuff in there. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Another speaker?
No, no, he's still talking.
Quiet, quiet.
No, I think somebody interrupted him.
Somebody interrupted him.
Go, go ahead, Chris.
Go ahead.
I just wanna finish up and say, the city of Niagara Falls is a legacy, and not a good one, but it puts it to chemicals and materials that are, to this day, still bringing problems to us. And rather than aggravate that situation, I, I prefer that we do things to mitigate that. And I think one of those things we can do is reject this project, not if this board thinks today, I understand your role, and considering this process is your, um, part of, you're going to end this project, and they can find a much better place to produce this product, that I acknowledge is necessary, um, to make a world go round. That's all I have to say, I appreciate your work, your time, thank you.
Is there anybody else on the phone or via WebEx that would like to say anything?
Hi, uh, this is Jeremy Colby, do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Jeremy Colby, General Counsel for Niagara University. Uh, we submitted a number of comments, including a report by E A Engineering, uh, outlining the various deficiencies in the, in the proposal. Uh, we also submitted comments to the D E C by our attorneys at Lewis Mathias. Uh, I won't, uh, reiterate, you know, everything that's in, uh, the documents we submitted. Uh, I understand that this is a, a difficult, uh, you know, the logistics and the sound are a little bit difficult here today, so I wanna try and keep it short. Uh, I, I do, however, think that it's very important, you know, uh, a few points to note out. I know that, um, the developer had indicated that the zoning permits this. Uh, I think Niagara University disagrees, it's actually, uh, not a permitted use, uh, in the D O B C. Although it is a heavy, it is zone heavy in street, and it's, you know, it outlines, um, and again, this is more for the, the town of Niagara, I understand, um, you know, outlines the various permitted uses, none of which are, um, I'm sorry?
No, I apologize, keep talking.
Okay, so the, the zoning board outlines various, uh, industrial codes that are permitted, and the industrial code associated with this use is not, uh, not one of those permitted, uh, uses, I just wanted to look at. Uh, but also more importantly, uh, the county planning board, I think, you, you know, one of the roles, one of the reasons that you engaged in this exercise is to take a look at the bigger picture, and how this impacts not just a little slipper of the town of Niagara, but, but the rest of the county, uh, and the various southern municipalities, and that's why it's here, is because it's within five hundred feet of the border of the town of Lewiston. And, you know, as we indicated earlier, um, I don't exactly know where the, uh, where the plant is supposed to be. It sounds like from today's meeting, it's, it's intended, uh, to go closer to Wimmer than to the, um, the service road, the power authority service road. Uh, but again, the property line is within several hundred feet of, uh, of the dormitory. And frankly, regardless where the project goes on this site, that is the main entrance for our campus. People coming to see the campus, to see if they wanna spend four years at Niagara University, are gonna drive right by that asphalt plant. And, uh, I gotta tell you, you know, Niagara University is one of the largest employers in the county, uh, estimated an economic impact of, of nearly two hundred and forty million dollars. Uh, I think that's a very risky gamble over, you know, a half dozen seasonal jobs. I think there are, um, you've got plenty of other, uh, sites that would be much more compatible to this use, uh, than the present site. And so, uh, I'll, I'll mess there, if there's any questions for me, that's fine, we've submitted a number of, uh, a number of comments that, you know, uh, that, that I believe outline our, our, our position.
Anybody else?
Is, is there anybody else that would like to say anything?
Anyone?
I, I just want to say that in my analysis that, in my analysis that it was property-owned, it was based on the town Niagara's initial approval first. Second, it did offer another site, uh, to the Niagara University, which is heavily industrial as well, or selling heavily industrial, which is thirty-five, thirty-five Hyde Park. And my understanding was, in that offer, Niagara University said they weren't interested anyway. That, and we said, we're part of the work this out. And, you know, if, if, if it is a necessary product that we have to produce, or she's entitled to produce it like everybody else is, I'm not sure, whatever I thirty-five, thirty-five Hyde Park, which has nothing to do with Niagara University, would also be a problem. Just my assumption.
How many adjacent properties are located next to this, uh, project? Holden, Springer Holden.
It's, it's all sort of industrial. It's all industrial, the closest thing is the dormitory, Springer Niagara University.
Amy, take your arrow down south, there's Niagara Falls, right there, Pennsylvania, Amy.
It's all junkyards.
It's all junkyard?
Yeah, it's all junkyards.
Yeah.
Amy, where's thirty-five, thirty-five Hyde Park?
To the left. Hyde Park. Amy, you wanna put up your example where they're gonna put the project?
Uh, property line, sure, can you put property line on it?
Sorry, see how close it is?
Cars are around, they're just black, they're, they're hard to see. They used to be yellow, but I don't know what happened, they updated it, so it's, yeah, it's, it's gonna be like, it's, it's this property right here, this is-
And where is Niagara University?
Niagara University, Power Service Drive here.
Right there.
And the dorms that they're not-
There's the dorms, right there.
It's Niagara University. I, in your packets, um, copies of all the public comments that we received, uh, emails that were sent through Legislative Chris Robbins, uh, they were included in the packets that got emailed out to everybody. Um, I think as the board, you know, talks about and, and determines what their recommendation will be, I think it's important to note that you can't deny a project based upon public opposition or, uh, public opinion of the project. However, you can and should look at a project based upon, uh, the criteria the state law sets out, and, you know, just as a refresher, a copy of that was put in your packets, and the, the types of things that this board should be considering. Um, I just wanna follow up on one thing that Niagara University Council mentioned, and the town of Niagara zoning code, which I, I think is very applicable to this board, is that in the zoning code for heavy industrial districts, the permitted principal uses are laid out, and they have thirty-one allowable uses that follow the standard industrial classification manual. And each of them, stick codes. So each of those codes, I reviewed all of those, and, um, the sick code for asphalt plants is twenty-nine fifty-one. And that is not one of the allowable permitted as a right uses that's within, you know, zoning code. Uh, you know, they have a lot of different manufacturing, uh, specific codes that are within the zoning law, but that is not one of them. And it is also not one of the uses that is listed as a use permitted with a special permit. So I think that's something for the board to consider when they're determining what to do for this project.
I'm gonna ask for a motion right now, I mean, we've listened to the people there, we've listened to both of them, they're giving presentations.
I've got the commission motion, I, or, very little to wrap her thing, and I trust that. There's a transcript of this meeting, so I can get it later, because I can't understand too much.
Yeah, um-
Now, the comments that were included, the comments that were received by the board, along with the, I believe, the attorney for Niagara University said it was A and B for four comments. I, I didn't receive any of those, and I would've been prepared to, had I received them, to comment back. I, I guess at the end of the day, I'm gonna go back to the question of, I offered another site, thirty-five, thirty-five Hyde Park, which I believe, which I agree is not from the board today. However, the attorney for N U had indicated that, you know, this is not the right location. Everything's, everybody's agreeing that we're reaction, everybody's agreeing that it can be moved, I believe, that it can be moved, uh, freely, and within the New York State D E C guidelines, requirements, restrictions, again, permit. But everybody's saying, this isn't the right site. So I've had offers to, and in particular, appreciating the fact of the location of those next to N U, and offers thirty-five, thirty-five Hyde Park in a discussion, uh, with your attorney.
I'll try to make it louder. Uh, um-
Thank you.
On the observations, uh, by the way, a back house is very, it does something for articulates, but it doesn't address V O Cs, just mentioning it. But I'm going to make a motion to reject the proposal for three reasons. Uh, one reason is the S, uh, S I C code issue of being allowed here. Number two reason, and it's, and this is based on the documentation that I've gotten to review, so subjective data, uh, that it appears as though there's a lack of technical- uh, that it appears as though there's a lack of technical engineering that would prevent chemical or physical agents from going off the property. Being able to go off the property, it would be my concern for Niagara County as compared to the property.
I'm sorry, I, I'm not able to speak, but have you reviewed the D E C permit in its entirety and have you looked at all the...
Yes, yes, and, and...
That Mr. Jim Hay, our expert, has submitted relative to that?
Yes, and, and, and that's why I'm still making this. And number three is, uh, the fire explosion potentials because of the volatiles, the flammable nature of the volatiles and the lack of firefighting preparation and equipment on the site. So for those three reasons, S, S I C, uh, especially the VOCs and benzene, um, lack of attention to the little pieces that are listed as fugitive emissions and also the potential for fire and explosions. And we now have seen literature that's from, um, that's available. It shows that over the last ten years, there's been a handful of asphalt fires and explosions. So we need to be prepared for those fires.
Andrea?
I will second.
An actual explosion?
Actual tank explosions, yes, correct.
Take, take explosion, uh, from delivery, explosion of tanks on site, I'm sorry. I would just reflect that there.
Any, any place, any place where you have the heated asphalt, that'll be the tank, that would be the mixing area, that would be your silos, um, you know, cigarette smoking, a spark and ember, those, and when you get benzene, tylenol, uh, and those type of things, they are extremely like gasoline flammable. And all you need is the right condition and you can go and you don't have the media to fight it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Both? Denied, eight to none.